Council meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Thank you. Counselor Baker.
Yeah.
Counselor Campbell. Counselor Siomo.
Here.
Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson. Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan. Counselor McCarthy. Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. And Counselor Zachem.
Thank you. At this time, we will begin our meeting with an invocation. So I'd like to ask all counselors and guests to please rise. I will give the podium over to Counselor Siomo, who will introduce our faith leader for the day. And after the invocation is delivered, please remain standing, and Counselor Siomo will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Siomo?
Thank you very much, Madam President. I am so honored to have my very good friend, Sister Mary Black from the Sisters of St. Joseph's, join us today to lead our body in prayer. Sister Mary Black has been a member of the Sisters of St. Joseph's for 67 years of dedicated service. She's lived in Brighton for the last, how many years? 12 years. I asked her permission to tell this quick story. Back when she was the principal of St. Columcils in Brighton, back in the early '70s, I did a off-campus placement, and I chose St. Cals because all my pals went there. And I went to attend the first class after Sister Mary Black, as the principal signed off on my paperwork. So I go into the class, and everybody's like, "What are you doing here?" And I disrupted the class. And Sister Catherine Keef, who we both remember, said, "You, you sit in the back of the class." So I sat next to another buddy in the back of the class, and she wasn't too happy with that because, again, I was being disruptive. No, in the back of the class. She had one chair up against the wall, and that's where I was supposed to sit. And so I observed the class, and the next day I showed up. And when I showed up to the class I was supposed to go to, the sister sent me to the principal's office. And the principal said, "I'm sorry, we're going to have to end this little experiment. You caused too much disruption." But nevertheless, we've always been good friends. She was very kind to me even after that incident. But the Sisters of St. Joseph's, as we all know, do such good work throughout our communities. They're educators, they work with the poor, and Sister Mary Black told me earlier, she works volunteers in a safe house. She still fundraises for Cathedral High School and just got through with a $1.2 million campaign for Cathedral, which she was a staff member of for many years, and working in the safe homes for human trafficking victims as well as visiting prisoners. And she does this voluntarily. And I just feel very grateful today because we worked in this scheduled appearance with her morning routine of walking to Mass at Boston College, walking to the YMCA to do a couple of laps, and then she came here today. So without further ado, my good friend, the incomparable Sister Mary Black.
As I was preparing to open this meeting with the Priya, it came to me that this is really a very sacred opportunity. From thinking about what you do here, I realize that this is indeed a very holy place, a proper place to pray. What you think about, what you talk about, and what you hope for is all about making life better for the people of God, the people of this city, and in my heart, I believe that that is what is expected of all of us, that each of us is here to lend a hand to the other, to love our neighbors as ourselves, and that is exactly what your constituents have elected you to do in this very special and focused way. And so as I open this prayer, I ask you to join me in spirit to enter into communion with your God, the Spirit that inspires you to care for the other, especially those who are most needy in our city, and to rely on you, their elected officials, their city councilors, to promote that which will make their lives happier and more productive. And so we pray. Dear God, bless our time together today and be with us in the days to come. Help us to have always the happiness of the people of our city in mind. May what we do here promote their well-being for our elders, our college students, our young professionals, as well as, in a very special way, our children and their families. Be with our public servants, our teachers, our social workers, and all those who risk their lives for us, our firemen and women, and in a particular way, in this time of great misunderstanding and stress, our Boston policemen and women. May we always put them first in our deliberations together. May we grasp those things which you want us to understand. May our hearts always be ready to respond with wisdom to you and your people. We pray these things with trust in your care and help. Amen.
We will begin today's meeting with approval of the minutes from last week's meeting. If there are any objections, edits, or amendments, please make them known. Seeing and hearing none, the minutes of last week's meeting stand approved. You had an announcement, Madam Clerk?
Yes. To all counselors, and I know I gave revised agendas, there has been a shifting in the agenda. Nothing has been removed from the agenda. No docket number has been changed. When it was first created, docket number 1428, which is Rule 34, was actually listed under Reports of Public Offices and Others, and it should have been reported under motions, orders, and resolutions. And as you see, if you look at that category, docket number 1428 is first agenda item. So thank you for your patience.
Great. Does everyone have the correct agenda in front of them with motions, orders, and resolutions, the last section starting with 1428? Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we will start with communications from His Honor, the Mayor.
Docket number 1418, message and order authorized in the Mayor's Office of Emergency Management to accept and expend a grant for the U.S. Department of Homeland Security passed through the Massachusetts State Executive Office of Public Safety in the amount of $14,216,000 for the Urban Area Security Initiative Federal Fund Year 2016 Grant to continue support of unique planning exercises, training, and operational needs that will assist in building enhanced and sustainable security capacity to help prevent response to and recovery from threats or acts of terrorism, including chemical, biological, radiological, nuclear, and explosives incidents.
Docket number 1418 will be assigned to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice.
Docket number 1419, message and order approving the appropriation of $856,257 from the Edward Ingersoll Brown Fund for projects that will ornament the city's streets, ways, squares, and parks.
Docket number 1419 will be assigned to the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Transportation.
Docket number 1420, message and order authorized in the Public Works Department to accept and expend a capital grant of $261,000 from the Boston Redevelopment Authority to be utilized for the study, design, and analysis of sidewalk and/or streetscape improvements on Boylston Street in the Back Bay area of Boston.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Planning and Development. Counselor Linehan.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to suspend the rules and pass this particular docket. This is a grant from the BRA to the Department of Public Works and one that would be used for capital and design study and capital improvements on Boylston Street and Counselor Zachem in I's district. So I ask that my colleagues would suspend and pass this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan. Counselor Linehan has moved for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1420. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1420 has been passed.
Docket number 1421, message and order authorized in the Parks and Recreation Department to accept and expend a donation of equipment and services with a value of $158,674,000 for Ulti Play Parks and Playgrounds, Inc., for the purpose of installing a play structure in Pageel Park in Rosendale.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Transportation, Counselor Lamatina.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to ask that we suspend and pass. This is equipment that was temporarily outside in City Hall Plaza. Now they want to put it permanent in the park in Rosendale, so the win-win for our neighborhood, particularly for us.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1421. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1421 has been passed.
Docket number 1422, message and order authorized in the City of Boston to accept and expend a grant of $69,975 for the Emergency Management Performance Grant FF 2016 Award by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, passed through the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency, to be administered by the Mayor's Office of Emergency Management.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, Counselor Campbell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to ask for suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 1422. Last year, this grant was used to develop the city's joint information system called the JIS Plan. The JIS ensures that our public information is streamlined as well as ensuring that there's consistency across messaging during emergency situations. With funding from this organization, this will train city departments, communication staff, on various public information roles necessary to successfully carry out that plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. Counselor Campbell moves for suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1422. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1422 has been passed.
Docket number 1423, message and order authorized in the Boston Police Commissioner to accept and expend a grant of $50,000 from the Massachusetts Department of Health and Human Services for the FY17 First Responders Naloxone Program.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery, Counselor Anissa Asabi George. Unless the Chair was confused and someone else would like to speak, I will defer.
No, I'm happy to speak on this, as I do think that it is related to the Committee on Homelessness, Mental Health, and Recovery, especially as we work to get Narcan, or as it's also called naloxone, into the hands of as many interested parties as possible, especially our first responders, who are dealing with now up to five overdoses a day. I think this is an incredibly important program, and I'm excited that we're receiving this additional funding for the First Responders Naloxone Program. Am I calling for a suspension and passage of 1423, please?
The motion has been put to the Council, and I will see if anyone else would like to speak on this matter. Thank you, Counselor Asabi George.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to add your thoughts? Counselor Campbell?
Thank you. Happy anniversary. So just as Chair of the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice, I stand to ask for suspension of the rules and passage of this docket to fund that very work. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. At this time, there has been a motion made and seconded for suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1423. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1423 has been passed. Reports of public officers and others.
Madam President, would you like to read?
Yes. All together, please. Thank you.
Docket number 1424, notice received from the Mayor of the appointment of Gregory Rooney as Commissioner of Property Management effective October 18, 2016. Docket number 1425, notice received from the Mayor of his absence from the city on Wednesday, October 26, from 7:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. Docket number 1426, notice received from the Mayor of his absence from the city on Saturday, October 29, from 6:00 a.m. to 1:45 p.m. And docket number 1427, communication was received from Counselor Wu, Chair of the Committee on Rules and Administration, to discuss city council personnel matters.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Dockets number 1424 through 1427 will be placed on file. Just a note for clarity on docket 1427, I think all of you should have received the invitation, but this will be for final interviews for the open position within city council central staff. So look forward to your participation tomorrow. And I want to thank Daisy in particular and central staff for running a great process in terms of recruitment and whittling down the candidates. Thank you. Matters recently heard for possible action.
Docket number 1110, ordinance mending CBC Chapter 18-1.16 modernize the city's streets occupancy permit program.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Government Operations, Counselor Flaherty. If you'd like to give an update on docket 1110.
Very good. Thank you, Madam Chair. We actually had a hearing on this yesterday. This matter was sponsored by our colleague, City Council Josh Zachem. Still a work in progress, and we are obviously making progress. I'll defer to the lead sponsor just to give the body an update as to where it stands, but looking forward to another working session. Hopefully, we can have that held within the next two to three weeks. And our goal here is, on behalf of our colleagues, to try to have something passed before the end of calendar year. But through the Chair, if we could recognize Counselor Zachem.
Thank you, Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Counselor Flaherty for sharing a productive working session. We are still waiting on some additional data from the Transportation Department and the CFO's office on some of the fees and structures and some of the technical aspects with the Hanson Computer System on implementing changes, but there is a general consensus that it is time to update this program after over 30 years. Despite inflation alone, some of these rates that we're offering folks for public parking spaces are laughably low. So I look forward to continuing to work with Counselor Flaherty and the administration to bring a final version of this legislation before the body by the end of the year, as Counselor Flaherty says, so that we can go into a new year addressing what I know is many of our downtown residents' concerns with the parking, the use, abuse of these permits, and making sure that the city is getting fair value for some very valuable parking spaces downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zachem. Docket number 1110 will remain in the Committee on Government Operations.
Madam President, would you like me to read?
Sure. Yes, please, Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1319, message and order authorized in the Office of Environment, Energy, and Open Space to accept and expend the Coastal Community Resilience Grant in the amount of $227,000 for the Climate Ready Boston Initiative awarded by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Office of Coastal Zone Management. Docket number 1320, message and order authorized in the Office of Environment, Energy, and Open Space to accept and expend $65,000 in the form of a grant for the Climate Ready Boston Initiative awarded by the BAR Foundation.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Environment and Sustainability, Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Madam President. Yesterday, the committee held a hearing on these two dockets, 1319 and 1320. I was joined by my good colleague and friend, Counselor Sal Lamatina. I'm hoping that we can suspend and pass both of these grants today. I'll briefly speak on what they will do. The first docket, 1319, is a $227,000 grant for the Climate Ready Boston Initiative awarded by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Office of Postal Zone Management. The second docket, 1320, is a grant of $65,000 for the Climate Ready Boston Initiative awarded by the BAR Foundation. It's matching grant funds that are available. Obviously, not one-to-one, it's slightly less than three-to-one, but nevertheless, it will allow us for close to $300,000 that will go towards developing a plan, resources, information, to reduce the vulnerability of Boston neighborhoods identified as significant risk for flooding impacts due to the effects of climate change. We'll be looking at two particular areas for this, both in Counselor Lamatina's district and Charlestown, as well as East Boston. And this is something that is incredibly important, but also, I think, very innovative and is illustrative of the fact that cities really seem to be taking the lead when it comes to combating the devastating effects of climate change. I often have said in this chamber that had Superstorm Sandy occurred six or eight hours earlier or later, back in 2012, I believe it was, whole swaths of the city would have been severely, severely, and deeply impacted. We got very lucky. So what this will do is it's identified some real flood zone areas and looking at ways that we can, you know, perhaps have plantings, have some gray infrastructure in terms of pavings, or green infrastructure in terms of trees and shrubs and asphalt that can really help as a mechanism to slow the flood plains and allow for safer neighborhoods. This is really, really interesting city engineering. It's going to not only add the environmental aspect, but also protect neighborhoods from flooding. Obviously, South Boston's another area of concern, just so many. Virtually all of our districts could be impacted. I did ask Carl Spector, who testified in support of this, if he would be willing to come back with us and visit with us, either in a formal setting, a hearing, or perhaps a briefing or a working session, to talk about what has been determined. This whole process is going to take about a year. Again, this is external funds that's going to be used to build the infrastructure to prevent flooding in our city, clearly caused by climate change. Ask for suspension and passage. This is a very, very important thing that we're doing today, and look forward to seeing what the results will be a year from now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Anyone else like to comment on those two dockets? Okay, so we will vote on them one by one, starting with docket 1319. Counselor O'Malley moves to adopt the committee report and pass docket 1319. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1319 has been passed. And on to docket 1320. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1320 has been passed. Oh, and Madam Clerk, apologies, Counselor Jackson has been at our meeting for a very long time, and I neglect his note. Could you please mark him as present?
Docket number 0359, order for hearing regarding the regulations and enforcement of the residency policy for Boston public school students.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Education, Counselor Jackson.
Thank you so much, Madam President. We had a very robust hearing, and it was very in-depth. I'm actually going to defer to the lead sponsor, Counselor Asabi George, for details, but this is an important component that we need to look at, looking at about $450,000 of city tax dollars that have left the city based on this issue. But I'd like to defer to the lead sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Counselor Asabi George, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Chairman Counselor Jackson. I would like to just quick note on that $450,000, that is one school year, that is last school year's dollar amount. I would like to thank Counselor Jackson for chairing an incredible meeting yesterday, and for counselors Presley, O'Malley, Campbell, and Flaherty for participating and asking thoughtful questions and participating in a great discussion. I called for this hearing because I believe that we can do more to protect Boston public school seats and protect them for Boston kids. I very much appreciate and thank the panelists for their participation and for helping us understand how enforcement investigation works. We were joined by Assistant Superintendent of Engagement Monica Roberts and Abud's Person Carolyn McNeil from the Office of the Superintendent. It's important to note that residency enforcement and investigations go through the Office of the Abud's Person, who only has a single investigator to cover the entire Boston public school system, which is 57,000 students strong. The Assistant Superintendent Roberts explained to us that the investigations are time and labor-consuming. One investigation takes an incredible amount of time. So when we hear of 100, you know, an average of 100 to 150 tips and only 22 dismissals, we can understand that this is a bigger problem than we actually have been able to note. We know that families that are savvy enough to get kids into a Boston public school system and skirt the residency requirement are savvy enough to keep kids in the system, and that it's historically out-of-town families that have been focused on the exam schools and accessing those seats. But we've also seen a recent uptick in the numbers for schools that have specialty programs like dual-language programs, inclusion schools, some with some specialized special education services, as well as K-0 and K-1 programs. We came away with an understanding that the system currently works on a reactive rather than proactive basis. I look forward to being more proactive and partnering with the Boston School Committee and the Superintendent to make some changes that would protect Boston public school seats for Boston kids, and really work to increase our awareness of the issue, make sure that we're asking families to prove residency upon school transitions, so when kids are moving from elementary schools to middle schools, to high schools, or into different programs, and that we also have a dedicated phone line for anonymous tips regarding families that are abusing our system. The good news is that today, the first bill is going out to a family who had children dismissed from Boston public schools for violating the residency policy. And I'm excited for that first step, and unfortunately, we are here, but it's a place that we need to be. And I look forward to improving our work when it comes to residency to just really ensure that Boston public schools are for Boston kids. I ask that this docket remain in the committee as we still have work to do, and I thank you all.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George. Docket 0359 will remain in the Committee on Education. Motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1428, Counselor Lamatina offered the following order that Rule 34 of the 2016-2017 City Council Rules be suspended on November 16, 2016, in order to have a meeting on the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Transportation.
Counselor Lamatina, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just, we're going to have a meeting next Wednesday on docket number 0922, and because of that meeting, we have to have this order passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Lamatina moves for suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1428. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Docket 1428 has been passed.
Docket number 1429, Counselor Campbell offered the following resolution, calling on the Baker administration to provide transparent briefing regarding privatization plans of the MBTA.
Counselor Campbell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, I rise to introduce a resolution calling on, as it was explained by our great clerk, the Baker administration to have a transparent and open briefing, not only with this body, but also with the public as it relates to the administration's privatization plans related to Kiolas and the MBTA. Many residents of District 4 have continued to report to my office about the frequent canceled services along the Fairmount Line. On many recent mornings, early trains have been canceled with little to no advance notification. Rail cars have been diverted to higher fare suburban commuter rail routes. Diverting trains from the Fairmount Line is a brave Diverting trains from the Fairmount Line is a grave misstep, not only for this community, but for all residents in the City of Boston, who lack practical alternatives to other modes of transportation. My residents, though, are not simply calling to complain about the problem. They have also offered great, incredible solutions, which include audio alerts, LED screens, or signs with a countdown, better up-to-date notifications on the MBTA's website or on social media, fewer cars per train, so that we can increase the frequency of the current fleet, lower fares within the inner city, but also fares that are consistent across the city for all residents, more local and regional sale terminals, and local reload options, so that residents are paying the lowest fare possible and not being required to pay a higher rate when they get on the train. Recently, we had a meeting, actually, in District 4 with Keolis, and Keolis mentioned the possibility of launching a fully automated fare collection system. My residents are opposed to this because they want them to get their current systems working properly first. While I appreciate Keolis' meeting with the residents and meeting with members of my team, much more needs to be done, and this briefing is essential so that we understand what the Administration's plans are now and what they are for the future. Given what's happened recently, even Congressman Capuano has taken the initiative in requesting a DOJ investigation into this denial of service. While we talk about privatization, sometimes it does work, and many times it does not. So we need to have a real conversation about the benefits, but most often, the lack of benefits for our community when it comes to privatizing our T-system. And last but not least, I have to acknowledge and recognize, of course, the Carman's Union, many of whom are here today. They recently had a rally on this matter. Many of my District 4 residents were there, many of my colleagues were there. They have been on the front lines for this for a really long time, and I think it's important that we stand with them, along with them, standing together to request that the Baker Administration respond and respond appropriately. So thank you, guys, for being here today, and thank you, Madam President. And I look forward to hopefully all of you either saying a word or two today or signing on to support. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Campbell. Just to clarify, from my knowledge, is the intention to suspend the rules? Okay, thank you. Councilor Baker, you have the floor.
I'd like to just sign on, and also just remember that business is always going to have business interests. This is a service to our constituents, so we have to keep that in mind. The service is more important than the profit, so I want to stand with the unions. Thank you, and sign on.
Thank you, Councilor Baker. Madam Clerk, would you please add Councilor Baker's name, add Councilor Siomo, Councilor Sabi George, Councilor Flaherty, Councilor La Matina, Councilor Linehan, Councilor O'Malley? Please add the Chair's name. Councilor Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. I want to compliment the maker, Council Campbell. This is thoughtful. This is not only a transportation issue, this is a social justice issue. It shouldn't be that it's easier and faster to get into town from Needham than from Matapan. That is ridiculous. This is a mass transit system, and the parts that have the highest concentration of people are actually the profitable parts of the system. Ironically, for every single commuter ride, they're subsidizing every single person on that ride. And so, the further away, the less efficient and less profitable a mass transit system is, and that's why it's called mass transit. And also, I think we need to, as they would say in the Michael Jordan commercial back in the day, we need to stop faking the funk, ladies and gentlemen, when it comes to that we can balance this budget on the back of worker. You could shut down the T, have no more rides, and it would still have a couple of hundred million dollars in debt that they would have to pay out every single day. I'm sorry, not daily, every single year. And so, the T is insolvent because folks in the past borrowed money on behalf of the T to move over to the Big Dig. That's why we are in the situation that we are in, and there's folks in the Gold Dome that are downtown, actually, who were in office at the time, that moved those dollars there. We need our governor to actually show leadership on this issue and to not turn their backs on the hard-working men and women who actually make this antiquated system work every single day. Another part of your district, Council Campbell, there are trains there that they have to go to museums and other places to get parts from, because they're circa World War II. So I think there's a lot of work that we need to continue to do, and we should actually look out for the folks who have done this hard work. And I find it comical that we would actually privatize the cash room first, which I absolutely don't agree. So please sign my name. And again, it's important that the Boston City Council stands up and says to our governor and also our friends at the State House that we need to invest in mass transit, and we need to fix this disparity. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Jackson. Madam Clerk, please add Councilor Jackson's name. Councilor Zachem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I want to thank Council Campbell for bringing this matter forward. It's sort of an old story here, not just in this chamber, but across the city of Boston, that instead of investing in necessary infrastructure improvements so that no trains have to be canceled, as opposed to the shifting from one community to another, so that people can get to work, get to their appointments, get to school safely, efficiently, environmentally, more environmentally friendly. But Governor Baker continues to blame the wrong folk, to not invest in the T, to look at privatization options, to look at balancing, as Council Jackson said, hundreds of millions of dollars in deficits, needs for billions of dollars in investment, on very incremental changes that are harming both the fare payers, the riders, and the workers who make this system run. I think it's a completely unacceptable approach to what is one of the major economic engines for not just greater Boston, but for the entire Commonwealth. If you look at any heat map of economic activity around the state, around greater Boston, it is very much, it matches up to where the T serves, what the T does as economic development tool. It's a social justice and economic justice issue. We're talking about Vision Zero and public safety, and having people, cyclists, drivers, pedestrians, safer. It's safer to be riding on a bus or taking a train than it's the other ways to get to work. It's more environmentally friendly, it's better for our economy, it's better for our community. We need, obviously, transparency on plans, as Council Campbell is calling for here, but there's a broader discussion, and it's something that the Baker Administration, not Councilor Baker, obviously. The Governor Baker's Administration is woefully inadequate on getting the information out to the public, and where they are casting the blame for the shortfalls of the T. Now, to discredit, I think Governor Baker inherited this situation, but he needs to show leadership, and that leadership means investment. And we're talking about investment in infrastructure, and we need to go to museums to get parts for our trains and buses, when we have trains and locomotives that have been in service since long before some of us here were even born, certainly before we were in office. It's completely unacceptable. So please add my name to this. I look forward to voting in the affirmative, and I certainly hope that they're hearing us up the street on the need for more investment and more transparency on the T. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Zachem. Madam Clerk, please add Councilor Zachem's name. Council Pressley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. My rise to commend the maker and to wholeheartedly agree with all the eloquent comments already said by my colleague. It just is mind-boggling. It seems that the Baker Administration and the MBTA continue to turn deaf ears and blind eyes to the urgent demands and practical recommendations from their consumers and their riders. Not only is this a social and economic justice issue, but I would say that it, in many ways, perpetuates concentrations of poverty and the segregating of our neighborhood. You know, people fought and made great sacrifices for that Fairmount Line to be extended, and there was a lot of pushback, because people really wanted to control who could come into their neighborhood. So this is a racial, social, and economic justice issue. This is about our economy, this is about our workforce, and these people here, you know, we stand in solidarity with you. I commend the maker, and I wish to have my name added and look forward to voting in the affirmative.
Thank you, Council Pressley. Madam Clerk, please add Council Pressley's name. Council McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam President. I want to make sure I sign on. Thank you, Council Campbell, for bringing this up, and thank you to Congressman Capuano for pushing this to his level and continuing to run with the ball. The interesting thing is, we handed him this ball months and months and months ago, when Council Wu and I had our first hearing with the MBTA out at the High Park Municipal Building. And I've been pounding this issue for a long, long time. Even when I was way back in Public Works, you know, we always joked that it'd take an act of Congress to move a bus stop. There's not a lot of communication there. But as we look through, especially the commuter rail in Keolis right now, what Congressman Capuano and what Councilor Jackson just insinuated is true. It is a social justice issue. In 02136 in High Park, we have three different prices to take the commuter rail downtown. We have a lot of developers that are looking to develop transit-oriented development, which could be very beneficial to our areas, but the reality is, that's not transit-oriented development. When it's $4 to park, yet 78% of the spaces are open, which is ridiculous to me, and then it's $6.50 to come in each way. And if you add that up, it's just a little bit south of $4,000 a year to come into work. Now, if you're working downtown and you're making 40 grand, 10% of your check is anticipated just to getting to work. How can you possibly live in Boston for that? You can go to Needham and take the train for cheaper. Or, and it's not about distance, and don't let anybody tell you it's about distance, because for four blocks, you can go from Rosendale to South Station, or you can go from Rosendale to Providence. So it's not about distance, it's about management. So I'm looking forward to a hearing, and thank you again for putting this resolution through.
6:25 from Rosendale, Council McCarthy.
Sorry. This is why you ride your bike.
As of July 1st, exactly. Thank you, Council McCarthy. Madam Clerk, please add Council McCarthy's name as well. Anyone else wish to comment on docket 1429? At this time, Council Campbell moves for suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1429. All in favor say aye. Any opposed say nay. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll on docket 1429?
Council Baker. Council Baker, yes. Council Campbell. Council Campbell, yes. Council Siomo. Council Siomo, yes. Council Sabi George. Council Sabi George, yes. Council Flaherty. Council Flaherty, yes. Council Jackson. Council Jackson, yes. Council La Matina. Council La Matina, yes. Council Linehan. Council Linehan, yes. Council McCarthy. Council McCarthy, yes. Council O'Malley. Council O'Malley, yes. Council Pressley. Council Pressley, yes. Council Wu.
Yes.
Council Wu, yes. And Council Zachem. Council Zachem, yes. Madam President, docket number 1429 receives unanimous vote.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Docket 1429 has been adopted unanimously. I am informed by the clerk that there are two late filed matters, which in the absence of objection will be added to today's agenda. Hearing none, the matters are added. Madam Clerk, would you please read the first late file?
The first late file, Order of Council President Michelle Wu, Transportation Policy Briefing Series. Be it ordered that the Boston City Council's Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Transportation will host a series of policy briefings related to key topics in transportation policy. The briefings shall feature presentations and discussions with policy experts, which will open to the public and broadcast live when possible. City councils represented by city departments, stakeholders, and other interested parties shall be invited to attend, filed in the chamber on November 2, 2016.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I deeply apologize for the late file. The timing worked out, given that we have some upcoming holidays and we will not be meeting next week. This is an order in partnership with Council La Matina that will allow the council to host a series of policy discussions about transportation policy. There are some local experts who wish to come and share some ideas around cycling, parking management, systematic safety and Vision Zero, pedestrian safety and transit priority, so all as it relates to municipal policy. We will be, if possible, doing it in the chamber and live-streaming it, and this creates the legislative docket so that we can actually attach that to our proceedings. And I want to encourage everyone to think about using this space and our process as a way to get a larger reach for our policy briefings, too. We talk about a lot, we take a lot of important votes, and we push a lot of legislation, but even before that, having the forum to talk about ideas and issues. Remember that we have the technology now and the leadership with Kerry and the team that we can be live-streaming briefings as well. So if you think there's something with broader public interest, I'm sure we can work it into the schedule, too. So thank you for your indulgence, and the first late file will be assigned to the Committee on Parks, Recreation, and Transportation.
Second late file matter, ordered by Council Frank Baker and Bill Linehan. Whereas the City of Boston Development Project in Dorchester and the WS Development Project in South Boston are two city-approved projects that soon will be home to many new businesses, including restaurants, movie theaters, hotels, and other venues. Therefore, be it ordered that a petition for a special law regarding an act authorizing the City of Boston to grant 15 additional licenses, three for WS and 12 for South Bay, for the sale of all alcoholic beverages to be drunk on the premises, and three additional licenses for the sale of malt and wine beverages to be drunk on premises.
Council Baker, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I apologize for the late file. It was an awful lot of conversations to just get it to this point. So in Dorchester, South Bay is investing in my community, a community that traditionally, for the last 40 years or so, maybe not the last 40, but the 35 before the last five, there was no investment in my community. This area here is formerly Boston sand and gravel, ma rigging, and really industrial sites, a no-man's land. South Bay is coming in with an investment between $200 and $300 million. The company is very much food-centric. Their concept revolves around food. So a lot of restaurants, there's hotels, there's movie theaters, 170,000 square feet of retail before you even get to the hotel. One of the things that this does for that company coming into my district to do business, it offers assurances. A lot of places won't come in unless they know that there's a beer and wine or a liquor license there for them. The discussion in the city and state for the past couple of months is about control. This doesn't necessarily speak to that root cause. I know we all feel that we should be controlling the liquor license. That isn't the case. We have to go to the state and ask. So that's what I'm doing. It would be restricted to this parcel, and same with WS. WS is down on the waterfront in Council Linehan's district. I think he'll speak on it briefly. So what this had me do was engage the state senator where both projects are, engage the reps that touch all these projects. They're all on board, and this is going to do a world of good in my neighborhood. So we'll have a hearing on this, and I look forward to a quick hearing and seeing if we can get this up to the state and moving along. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Baker. Council Linehan, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. My comments would echo Council Baker's. WS is the owner of most of the podiums of the existing buildings already built down, and they also own six or seven other parcels in the area, and it's all, they have all the podiums for retail, and also own potentially a billion dollars in future development that will occur down in that area. This is now the retail, commercial, entertainment side of the seaport and South Boston waterfront, and we want to make sure that they have the necessary tools to invest and fill these places and spaces. So thank you for the opportunity. Look forward to the hearing.
Thank you, Council Linehan. Council Pressley, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to commend the makers and just to say that this really does continue to underscore why decisions like this should be made on the municipal level. And it's why, you know, our Home Rule petition, and I thank all of you for your support in advancing that, as we continue to push for greater reform, we should not have to go to the State House hat-in-hand every time we want to develop in our neighborhoods. We are closest to the issue, and we know how best to economically develop or revitalize our neighborhoods. So, you know, I'm asking for all of your continued and collective support to apply all of the full weight of our leverage to push for full local control. This project is not dissimilar from Somerville's Assembly Row, and that was a situation where Mayor Cardison had to go to the state to do the very same thing. And we should not have to do development in piecemeal, one project at a time. As I've said before, and I'll reiterate, most retail has moved online, and so the new retail that's going into these spaces and these storefronts are restaurants. And as we move forward and continue to push for more smart growth, transit-oriented workforce, housing, in many of those developments, what they're putting for their retail are restaurants. And you have projects that are stalled. They've got all the They've got all the financing and everything, but they need licenses. So, I commend the makers. We have to continue to push for full local control. And in terms of one of the neighborhoods that we have seen not benefit from our Home Rule Petition, because there's been a deficit in applicants, is Matapan. And so, I am working on something. I look forward to having further conversations with members of this body about doing something that will be very specifically tied to Matapan. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Presley. Counselor Siomo, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I rise to ask that my name be added and, and concur with everything everybody has said. Recently, there was like five available licenses, there was about two dozen applicants, and, you know, we're picking winners and losers. And Main Streets has a, an advantage in these, and they should, Main Streets. However, as our city continues to grow, I think the last population count is over 670,000. And licenses are supposed to be granted based on public need. So, if our population is, is expanding, I think there's more public need. And I would just ask the makers, I want to commend them for their work on this. I would like to add an address that recently got denied, because it's, it's a place in my neighborhood that was formerly industrial, that is now emerging as the home of the Boston Bruins Practice Facility, the New Balance Headquarters, a new residential tower going up as we speak. They were denied. This is vital to getting more economic vitality into that area. It is so important. I, I understand the reticence of maybe extending liquor licenses that can be sold, transferable licenses. I would ask that all licenses be restricted from now on, that if you don't make it, you give them back to the city. Because the way it is now is if you have a transferable license, you're lucky enough to hit, to hit in the water, right? So, you say to the city, here's $2,000 to the city, and, and they're giving you $400,000, the value of the license. Doesn't make sense. And people that have restaurateurs who have used this to leverage loans to help their businesses, we can't hurt them either. We're stuck in this crazy, I don't know, confusing, complicated issue. But I think if we went down the road of restricted licenses, we should get, right, oh. And Counselor Presley, I want to recognize the work that you've been doing the past several years. I think it's time that our Boston delegation especially stand with us, you know, and start perpetuating the, the century-old discrimination that we're not big enough boys and girls to control our own licenses. So, it's about time that we all work together with our Boston delegation to get this done. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Siomo's name. Please add Counselor Zachem. Counselor Presley, did you, did you want your name added earlier? Please add Counselor Presley, Counselor O'Malley, Counselor McCarthy, Counselor Lamatina, Counselor Asabi George, Counselor Campbell. And I'm gonna go first to Counselor Jackson, and I know Counselor Baker has a second comment. Counselor Jackson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. To Counselor Siomo, I say amen. I, I believe that we are the closest form of government to these neighborhoods and communities, and we definitely, and again, kudos to the work that Counselor Presley has done in this space. We definitely should be able to make up our own minds about where these licenses should go and the effects that they will have on those neighborhoods and, and communities. So, kudos to you. I also do have a couple of areas that are ready to go in my district. There are, there's Parcel 3, there's Parcel 9 and 10, and then Parcel 8 that's coming out, as well as Barley Yard. I would love to have a conversation with the makers about which one of those actually fits. I think, as Counselor Presley brought up, listen, restaurants can't exist and can't thrive without a liquor license in the city of Boston. We know that it's 7% to 11% is their margin on food, and it's absolutely critical that they have, have these licenses. And interestingly, there's a book called Drinking Boston, and it actually goes back to the times of lockover. And prior to, to prohibition, we had about 1,200 licenses. During prohibition, Madam President, we had 4,500 speakeasy. So, if we were to actually look at what the real market is, we could probably look at that as the real market. But again, kudos to the makers, and also, kudos to Counselor Siomo. We do have to speak to our friends at the State House, and they should be on our side and the side of the neighborhoods and communities, and the entrepreneurs that create jobs. And I think we need to not only look at this as a food business, but this is economic development in our neighborhoods and communities, and jobs that many people can do and have access to. And so, I ask that my name be added and look for expedited hearing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Madam Clerk, please add Counselor Jackson's name. Please add Counselor Flaherty. Would you like to speak to it? Counselor Flaherty, okay. Counselor Baker.
Sorry to double-dip, Madam President, but I just wanted to, I just want to say that this, this all started because Dorchester Lower Roxbury is in the area where they want the licenses to go, and we had some petitioners from this, from South Bay, in front of the licensing board and got denied. So, this was trying to speak to that. And again, offer, offer a, a large investment, some sort of, some sort of assurances. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Baker. Counselor Siomo.
I'm sorry to double-dip as well. I just, I failed to ask that the sponsors would consider adding an address to this amendment, 98 guests. Thank you. And, and for any of my constituents that think that I'm supporting new nightclubs in my district, please know that I'm not. This is for the very thriving restaurant business in our district that need these to compete with all the other great restaurants in our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Siomo. The second late-filed matter, which is turning into a massive economic development bill, will be assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Okay, would anyone like to pull a matter from the green sheets? Hearing none, would, does anyone have a, oh, green sheets, Counselor Zachem? Okay, so we'll move on to statements, announcements. Counselor Zachem, you have the floor.
You have the floor. Unanimous consent to make a brief announcement.
You have it.
Many of you have received invitations, or all of you should have, by email from me for a presentation from Score Boston, which we're hosting tomorrow at 1:00 PM in the Curly Room. Score is largely volunteer organization of experienced business leaders, marketing, accounting, that sort of thing that helps small business through mentorship opportunities and through specialization. I mean, some of the things they work on are website development, marketing, personnel, HR management, all things that can be very troubling for people who are just starting a small business in our neighborhoods and do not have some of that expertise. It's helping people start their businesses, but also to expand existing businesses, and I think it's very timely, given this whole economic development discussion we just had. I certainly hope that all my colleagues can join us at 1:00 tomorrow in the Curly Room or send staff in your place. I think it's an important resource for all of our constituents. I know many of them come to me looking for these things, and I think it helps augment what the city is doing through the Office of Economic Development, and what we all do on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Zachem. Counselor O'Malley, for what purpose do you rise?
I ask for unanimous consent to make a brief statement.
No objection, please proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, I believe marks the end of the 90-day period for the Plastic Bag Ordinance Task Force that you and I have been working on since the summer. It was a wonderful process. Many of you and all of your staffs participated. We had three very well-attended meetings, two onsite here at the Hall, one out in the neighborhood at the Arnold Arboretum Building. We engaged social media platforms, we created an online survey. We're nearly 400 residents of Boston from every council district, from every neighborhood participated. And while we don't have a report ready yet, two weeks from today, the Council President and I will be holding a, an informational briefing for all of you and your staff. We will, of course, publicize it with the clerk once we've finished up the details, but we're looking at the 16th, which is two weeks from today at some point, and we will then hopefully be able to engage the conversation and keep going forward. But it was a very, very worthwhile process, and it was a tremendous opportunity. I'm incredibly grateful for our staffs, for central staff, particularly Jessica Morris and my staff, who really did some wonderful work with this, and look forward to having a conversation with all of you in two weeks, and then we'll take it from there. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Counselor Asabi George, for what purpose do you rise?
Thank you. I request unanimous consent to address the body. I would like to, just to note, I think we've been joking a little bit about it this week, but Andrea and I are hitting our anniversary mark tomorrow. So, tomorrow marks the one-year anniversary of our election to this body, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank all of you for welcoming me aboard and Andrea aboard. It's been an incredible 10 months to date. I, I want to thank my staff. I've, I think I've built and brought in an incredible staff, but I want to thank all of you for your leadership and your guidance and your mentorship over this period of time and helping, I know me through, and Andrea may want to thank you as well, but helping me through this process as I, you know, grow up and become a city counselor through this process. And I also want to thank your staff and central staff for supporting the work that we've been doing in our office and really teaching us, because there's, there's so much to learn. And as much as I'm a teacher, I've really appreciated the last 10 months being a student and learning from all of you, even though we don't always agree on all of the issues. I appreciate the, the education that I've received over the last 10 months. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Asabi George. Counselor Campbell?
I obviously have to stand up and say thank you as well, but first of all, thank you for sticking around. It's like 150 degrees in here, but it's been an honor to serve on this body. I tell my residents all the time, it's an incredible privilege to represent them on the council, and it was really exciting to be elected to this body with Counselor Asabi George. We became really close over the course of the campaign. But our colleagues, central staff, the clerk's office, all of you have made this process effortless in terms of us jumping right in, getting to the work, and really accomplishing a lot. So, I am extremely grateful to each and every one of you. And while we may disagree on the issues, what is abundantly clear is that we all care about this city deeply. We all love the city of Boston, and we all want our families, every resident in the city of Boston, to reach their God-given potential. So, I am excited to be here with each and every one of you, and I want to thank my staff, who is incredibly just awesome. I could not do this work without them. Central staff, also in particular, the clerk's office, IGR as well, for just navigating the communications with the other side. So, thank you all for the other side. So, thank each and every one of you, and thank you, Adisa. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Campbell. I mean, clearly, our two new colleagues, if we can still call you new, are such go-getters and agenda setters that they have spoken and reminded us that it is up to us to celebrate your one-year anniversary, so let us say thank you to you both. You've been doing a great job. Okay, would anyone else like to offer any other statements, et cetera? Great. At this time, if everyone could please rise. And we will prepare to adjourn today's council meeting in memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Flaherty, Ellen Hurley. For Counselor Lamatina, Vittorio Victor Grillo Sr., Irene M. Pesto, Celeste Rapucci, Mary Ravino, and Lucy Papa. A moment of silence, please. Thank you. Chair moves that when we adjourn today, we do so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. Council is scheduled to meet again Wednesday, November 16 at 12:00 noon. All in favor of adjournments, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, council is adjourned.